Okay, I would like to call together the meeting tonight with the Building and Ground Subcommittee for April ninth. Roll call, please.
Chairman Ford?
Present.
Mr. Castellanos?
Present.
Ms. Gately?
Present.
Ms. Capola?
Present.
Mr. Nicholson?
Present.
Mr. Satellite?
Present.
And Mayor McGee?
Present.
Okay, on the
Observing.
Okay, go ahead, John.
I'm sorry about that, I forgot. All right, Dr. Tuttwiler Superintendent, Kimberly Powers Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Rogero Deputy Superintendent, Mr. McHugh Business Manager, Mary Jewels Secretary of the School Committee, and Attorney John Miles.
Okay, we'll start the, uh, tonight's agenda has got a request by, it's now two Hispanic churches down by Harrington School that would like to use the Harrington School parking lot uh, all Sundays and most, some Saturdays. Um, I, I don't see any particular objection to this, um. Mr. Nicholson, I think the first request was made by you, correct?
Yes, that's right, um, I, I, I spoke with this, uh, this church and they, you know, they, they saw an opportunity, um, to, to, uh, you know, benefit the congregation and also, um, you know, you know, the, the, uh, assets that weren't being used and wanted to go about it the right way, you know, uh, come up with a process. They also offered to, um, do some projects, uh, on, on the sort of pass that connect the, the lot to the street and so on and so forth, so I think it'd be a great opportunity to, to partner, uh, obviously assuming that there's no impact on the, the educational use, um, but yeah.
Yeah, that would be the only concern that I would have is that possibly if we allow them to use the lots that come Sunday, if they, you know, don't feel like moving the car or they want to wait, that we, uh, we're gonna Monday morning where we get cars in the lot. That could be an issue, um. I was thinking about maybe drafting up a little agreement, um, with permission that we can rescind the agreement if they don't follow, you know, what, what our rules are. And the rules would be simple, just get the cars out of there after the service is on Sunday. Uh, does anybody else, else have anything to say on that? Mr. Castellanos?
Yeah, I'll just, um, in terms of just liability wise, uh, Attorney, could, could we have the Attorney Miles in terms of what that looks like? And, and just in terms of just previous requests to use the, our grounds, and what, what, what exactly do we need in, in terms of writing, like, I, I know what Member Ford just presented, what, what, what do we look at as a process?
I don't think you need a written, it's a license to use the, uh, the lot, we've done it before over at, um, at a club at elementary, the church right next door uses that lot. Just a verbal okay with the understanding that it's just a license. The understanding can be rescinded by the school, school committee at any time. It doesn't have to be in writing, but it can be done orally.
Uh, Mr. Nicholson?
Yeah, and just, and just, um, on that point, I know this, the city, um, cause that, the, the, as part of this process, I talked to them and, and was inquiring about their insurance as well, so from a liability perspective, we'll make sure that they have insurance.
Okay, um, anybody else got a comment? Ms. Capola?
Um, I, I do remember sometime back, the, um, the Lindtac Annex, the church that's right down the street on Commercial wanted to use that, what's the difference between when we said no there and when we say, saying yes to this? Just, you know, so that nothing comes back on us, that we denied one church, but, you know, it's okay for other churches.
We, uh, the, the only understanding I have on that is they, they were trying to put, use a food bank.
But that, that was different because that was Saint Mary's Food Bank, um, needed to leave Saint Mary's and they wanted to put a trailer there. That, that was a little different. But it was just for parking. I don't know if Attorney Miles knows the answer to why we said no that time.
I, I, I have, I don't remember, I don't remember that occurring. So I really can't answer that question. Definitely have the ability to take a look at the minutes and ascertain what we did.
Is, um, is everybody on the committee, uh, the subcommittee agreement on doing this?
Yep.
If someone want to put in the form of a motion?
Our request, put in a form of a motion to allow the two churches to have po- to use of the parking lot on Sundays and occasionally on Saturdays.
Is there a second?
Second?
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
So I was, yes, I, I put in that motion with the understanding that the, the license to use the parking lot can be rescinded by the school committee at any time.
Okay.
No more.
Right, second? Okay, motion made and seconded. Roll call.
Chairman Ford?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, we're moving on to the full committee in the meeting. Entertained a motion to adjourn? So moved? Motion made to adjourn, second?
Second.
Fill me out again, Ms. Gately?
What?
Motion made and seconded, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
And we'll con- we'll convene the full meeting in six minutes.
Good.
Donna? I couldn't remember that.
Yep.
Great. So, hello everyone, and, uh, welcome to the seventh regular meeting of the Lynn School Committee, Thursday, April eighth, twenty twenty-one. As a preliminary matter, we will con- confirm attendance. Uh, Deb, could you please confirm all the members in person who's anticipated on the agenda and present and can hear us?
Absolutely. Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Ford?
Present.
Member Gately?
Present.
Member Nicholson?
Present.
Member Satellite?
Present.
Mayor McGee?
Present.
And observing, Dr. Tuttwiler Superintendent, Ms. Powers Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Rogero Deputy Superintendent, Mr. McHugh Business Manager, Mary Jewels Secretary of the School Committee, and Attorney John Miles.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to say good evening and thank everyone for joining us. Uh, this open meeting of the Lynn School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. For the, all members of the pub- public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting on the city website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. This meeting, the Lynn School Department is convened by telephone conference via video conference via the Zoom platform as posted on the city's website and the Lynn Public Schools website. Additionally, this meeting can be, excuse me, viewed on the local cable channels, channel three for Comcast, channel thirty-seven for Verizon. Please note this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Uh, before we turn to the first item on the agenda, uh, we will cover some ground rules for the meeting, the same ground rules we've had throughout the year, and I will, um, reiterate and repeat them uh, so that we can connect, conduct clear and effective, uh, business to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As the chairman, I want to introduce speakers on the agenda, uh, after they conclude their remarks, I will go the lot, down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Uh, you will hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps them generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and, um, state your name before speaking. Members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourselves. Again, finally, each vote taken at this meeting tonight will be conducted, uh, by a roll call vote. Um, I'd like to ask you, uh, now as we go into the meeting, to join me for a salute of the flag and, and then I'd ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, ask that you join all of us in a moment of silence for Gina Marcos, who passed away on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, uh, as was a, and was a special edu- education clerk. Thank you. First on the agenda is, uh, the minutes and accepting the minutes from a number of meetings, um, listed, which, uh, everyone has, uh, copies of. We would entertain a motion to, uh, accept the minutes.
I make a motion, Mayor, to accept the minutes, the Athletic Subcommittee meeting on January seventh, twenty twenty-one, the first special meeting on January seventh, twenty twenty-one with an executive session, first regular meeting on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one with executive session, public hearing on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, policy Subcommittee meeting on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, Buildings and Ground Subcommittee meeting on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, and the second regular meeting on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Second? Thank you for the motion, is there a second?
Second.
The second requires a roll call.
Mr. Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Satellite?
Yes.
And Mayor McGee?
Yes. Next on the agenda is a request to accept donations to the music department. Uh, Dr. Tuttwiler? Would you like to, uh?
Glad to, uh, seeking, uh, the committee's, uh, support in accepting, uh, uh, donations of two instruments, three pianos, uh, and an accordion. Uh, the pianos are coming from Cary Alteri, Jimmy Hill, and Vincent Phelan, uh, and the accordion from Bill O'Brien. Uh, this has, uh, the support and approval of our Assistant Director uh, for Music Education, typically instruments, uh, you know, donated instruments are, are, you know, you really need to scrutinize them to make sure they're in good working condition and, uh, she has done that, and so we are seeking the committee's support for these donations.
Thank you, any questions from the committee? Seeing no questions, uh, entertain a motion to, uh, accept the donations.
Motion to accept?
Accept.
There's a motion made and seconded, we require a roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Satellite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Next on the agenda is a budget transfer.
May, can we just say, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could we just, uh, have, uh, Mary Jewels send thank you notes to those folks in regards to the instruments?
Thank you, Member Capola, I think it's a great idea and, uh, I would concur wholeheartedly, so,
Thank you.
Uh, great recommendation, Mary, if you would take care of that, I'm sure we would all be, uh, happy for your help on that, thank you. Again, next on the agenda is the, uh, twenty-one budget transfers by, requested by, um, Kevin McHugh.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I provided in your packet a, um, memo, uh, listing, a list of, uh, transfers. I'm gonna go through them and give you some background in each one of them so you have a little more, uh, uh, a little more information as we go forward, since these are very large, uh, requests, and as we did a little bit last year with some salary savings, which is mostly, uh, where most of this fund are coming from. We want to try to reinvest these into projects that, uh, we can get done, you know, now and get them done for between now and the end of the summer, so that when the opening of the school happens, uh, it'll be a good investment, and as you can see, most of these are technology, and I think, uh, that, uh, these investments would allow us to really bring our classrooms, I consider, back up to probably a leader in the industry in the schools in this area as far as what the teachers and staff and what we'll have in those classrooms, uh, so a lot of thought. And actually, we've had meetings in some of these with teachers, staff, and just so it's not just, uh, it was a process that we went through over the last couple of months, bringing people in to look at different items and, and so we could choose the best product at the best price as well. So, the first one was the smart board replacement. So, we currently have about nine hundred and twenty smart boards installed in classrooms across the district. Most of these were purchased about ten years ago when we received the SFSF fund. Some of yous may remember that was the State Fiscal Stabilization Fund, which was part of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act that was, uh, through the federal government. So we started at that point buying computers and actually a lot of smart boards. So this, that was the initial investment, so it's like over ten years ago. So over the last couple of years, we're starting to have the, uh, smart boards fail, so we really got a good value out of those dollars, and now we're gonna have to start replacing them, this year alone, we're up to thirty-two, uh, replacement boards. And at this point, you're buying them one at a time and we're having to install them. So what we did is we went out and actually got a quote to see what it would cost to replace eight hundred smart boards. So, we have nine twenty, so we're gonna buy about eight hundred of smart boards, and the company will install them and have them pur- if we purchase them now, we can get them installed by the end of the summer. So, uh, these are seventy-five inch flat panel, interactive panels, so they're basically like a TV panel. So they're the latest version of the smart boards, which is the product our teachers and staff use, so there, there's a not really a learning curve, but we did look at another product, uh, actually, that product came in, we didn't think it was as, uh, it was a lesser version of this product, but it actually came in more expensive, uh, than this one. Uh, and importantly, on this one, we also got, uh, software, free software, which totaled three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars of software, no additional cost. The other product did not come with any software, and that would have had to been purchased separately. So that's one of the reasons we chose this, um. And at that point, we feel that there would also be, if we had to purchase them little, little by little over the years and keep doing it the way we're going, it would cost us probably about another six hundred and forty thousand dollars to do it that way. So the total savings by doing this purchase all at once is nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars if we make this purchase right now and move it, and I, we feel it's the right thing to do for that reason, as well as we're gonna have state-of-the-art in the classroom for teachers, and they're gonna be done by the end of summer, the vendor is ready to go. Uh, we've gone through the quote process and got our quotes in line, and we just have to transfer the funds and we can sign a, um, a contract with them to start this project, so that's the first one, I think that's a very important one, and that's why we put it number one on the list. Uh, and that's the reasoning for these, you'll see, they're kind of prioritized how we saw this. The next one was the teacher workstations. Teacher workstations are actually, it's a stand-up, uh, table desktop that would be separate from their regular desk, and it's gonna be next to the smart board. So as teachers now all have laptops, they're gonna be able to put their laptop on the, the stand-up desk and hook it directly up to the smart board to help with their teaching while they're standing there, so it'll all be connected as one. And you can see that cost is, uh, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We're gonna be purchasing nine hundred and fifty of those desks, so every classroom that has a smart board will have one of these desks right next to it, so that's, we felt was a part of the project, so that the teacher won't have to figure out how they're gonna plug this, the new laptops they have just recently received into the smart boards. So that's the second one. The next two items, the firewall upgrade and the internet bandwidth, uh, we also feel are very essential because the, uh, firewall, uh, will allow us to upgrade our internet bandwidth from eight gigabytes to twenty gigabytes, and this is necessary to handle the increased number of devices on our network. Last year, we had an estimated amount of about nine thousand devices, currently, we now, we know we have twenty thousand devices on our system, and the bandwidth needed to support that so that people aren't getting buffering, if you're familiar with that, and able to transmit video and everything else, so that is, we believe, a very important project to ensure that as we move forward with our, as, as the computers are now gonna be used on a daily basis in the classrooms that we wanna have, and we have schoolology and everything else, we want to ensure that there are no interruptions of staff when they're working with their students, and there's always gonna be a potential, I believe, that some students still might be remotely, we want to be able to have them engaged in the classroom as well. Uh, the next is, um, document cameras, so these are just basically cameras that we're gonna purchase nine hundred and fifty, again, so every classroom will have one, and this will also assist the teachers in their daily teaching ability to, you know, to differentiate instructions, so they can have a camera, uh, if they're looking at an object, everyone in the classroom be able to see it off the smart board, it'll be interactive through the smart board, or if a student's at home, they'll be able to see it through the smart board as well, so those are the document cameras we're looking to purchase. Uh, obviously, there's, uh, additional student headsets and student mice, uh, even though they have the laptops, a lot of the students are likely to use, plug the mice into the laptops, and that's gonna allow us to ensure we have enough, but also have enough, as we know, we're gonna have new additional students next year in the fall, like kindergarten kids coming in, and so we might have students moving in for, that weren't here this year, we want to ensure we have an adequate supply to go forward on that. And the English security upgrade, um, I was working with, uh, Orin Wright on this one, and English was the very first school that we installed our camera system in, and I'm not sure what year, but that was probably back when, um, I wanna say like Bobby Ferrari was here, maybe that's ten, twelve years ago, and it's an analog system. So it's, it's at the point where it's a GE analog system, and GE no longer supports it, you can't buy any more cameras, their servers and recorders, we can't buy them anymore. So what Orin felt is this would be a, an investment because this has seventy cameras in the school, and this would allow us, if we upgrade to a new, um, IP system with, uh, with the, uh, dome cameras, like you recall, like you see them in the, uh, school committee room, so it'll be the newer cameras, and that would put them into an up, brand-new updated system, and all those cameras and DVR recorders would then be mothballed, we, if we have other schools that have them, we're gonna reutilize them as backups until we eventually start, uh, going through all the other additional schools, so we're not gonna waste anything, we're gonna keep it as an, an emergency backup and have, uh, items we can use down the road. And lastly on the list is the English, um, portable furniture. Uh, with the project cost, where there was no, uh, money available to buy, uh, furniture, so we need to provide, uh, student desks for every classroom, we buy two bookshelves for the classroom, a teacher desk, and a wardrobe closet that locks, so every teacher has something they can lock their, hang their coat up and lock their stuff up as well. So that's the salaries, and you can see I gave a, the rationale as well as a recommended motion to transfer on that one. The next item is a non-salary transfer, and I felt that this was so important that, you know, normally within sometimes non-salary, but this is a large amount of money, I wanted to ensure that I brought it forward as a project. And this is the, um, video upgrade to the system. Again, we had, we did two demonstrations with two different schools with the company, they came in, I believe one was over at Breed, where we had the principal, we had administrative staff there, we had teachers in the room, and it's a video system that's going to allow, uh, like four speakers in the room, and the teacher's gonna have her microphone, so it's gonna be allow the, uh, staff or all the students to hear everything very clearly. Uh, it's also gonna give the benefit for any student at home, because sometimes if they're home and the teacher's talking, and they're not standing right next to the computer, it's a little bit more difficult for the students to hear that. So this is gonna be an amplification, uh, audio system that's gonna take care of that. It, it also is going to connect and be our, what we're calling our new, um, uh, system to alert people, you know, as a PA system. It's got that ability to do that as well. So, uh, we feel this is a worthwhile project, uh, we've gone around and looked at this and I, we've gotten all support from everyone that's seen it, including ISD, because they know that some of the older buildings are starting to have ca- like cabling issues with the, uh, PA system, and this would eventually replace that, so we'll have a new, brand-new, uh, system in every school. Uh, so that's, these are the items, uh, I've given you a recommendation of a motion for the, the, uh, salary one, then I have a separate one for the non-salary, so that's an overview of the projects, and I guess I can try to answer any questions if anybody has anything on any one of these.
Member Satellite, then Member Castellanos?
Thank you, Kevin, um, a lot of good information, and, um, I, I, I like that we're allocating the excess funds towards much-needed um, uh, equipment a- as well as upgrades to the classrooms. I, I, I do have, um, one, uh, uh, maybe two questions. The first one, with the smart board technology and the replacement, uh, what are we gonna do with, uh, getting the teachers trained on that, uh, uh, equipment? Um, if we're gonna get it installed over the summer, are we gonna add days to the next school year, or are we gonna try to do that uh, during, uh, the time where the teachers come in, um, and, uh, they're without students?
Uh, my understanding, this is just the newer version, it interacts the same way they use it now, it's just, instead of, uh, uh, some of them have a, um, uh, if you've seen it, if you've been like, you, you're gonna be here on Saturday, when you go in two oh six, uh, to do a, a Saturday meeting, you're gonna see like a video, uh, like a projector up on the unit, these won't have that unit, so really, it's replacing that, and it's going to be, it's all on like a TV screen, so it's a touchscreen as well, so there, there'll be, we can provide, I'm sure, some training on it, but on the most part, exactly what teachers use it for now is the same exact thing.
Yeah, you, you're describing what's in the conference room off of the school committee room, the one that we, we normally, um,
Yes. Yes, that, that is, you know how, if you look up at it on top, there's like a projector screen, I mean, a projector that projec- these won't have that, that'll be eliminated, it'll be all within like a TV.
Okay, um, and, and again, um, you, you, you still don't believe that it would be necessary to have any sort of a training on it?
Well, we can always provide it, I mean, I know we have some professional development days early on, and we can, might be able to work something in just as a refresh, you know, as part of that, when, we can do that, and when teachers come back the first couple of days, I believe, we have one, at least one day, if not multiple opportunities to work with them to just go through a little overview with each school.
Okay.
That can be worked in.
Perfect, and then a security upgrade for English? Um, I, 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 my assumption is it's just solely based off of the, the camera use, it's not the issues that we had when someone broke into the school a couple of years ago?
Yeah, this is just a camera system that we currently have, and that's an old, uh, uh, it's, you know, it's coax cable, it's not computer-based, like anything new is all IP-based, that you basically use like for your computers. So, uh, that, that's it, unfortunately, it doesn't tie into windows and things of that nature, if somebody opens a window, it's just, we have a kind of two systems in the school, because we have the badge system, if you have an ID, you know how you can get in, so that's one. They tie together, but that's like a separate system, because we put those in second, that's after, so we're not going to be touching that. It's just the actual camera systems, and there's seventy cameras in, uh, English high schools across the, I didn't think there were that many, but there actually are seventy cameras there.
And, um, just the last, uh, comment, um, why did we stop at twenty bandwidth, um, instead of, uh, going a little bit more, just, just in case?
I would have to ask the IT people there, but that's what they recommended we have at this point to go forward, that would obviously cover us, because I wouldn't wanna put it, I agree, I wouldn't wanna be short and have problems with buffering and things of that nature, but I, I'll double check on that, but I mean, uh, obviously, that's what they worked with the vendor that they felt we'd need based on the, the amount of devices and everything else we have. Thank you.
Member Castellanos?
Uh, thank you so much, Kevin, I appreciate, uh, all, all the presentation and, and also the district's, uh, commitment to, um, increase in our technology access, I know a few years ago, went to a presentation around just the need for technology updates, and I could see the, the, the progression, uh, well, job well done. Um, I did, uh, Michael did ask, you know, a similar question I had about professional development, and I know is, we roll out new technology, that's, that is important, you know, and it's, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that, it's a pretty good transition from what they have now, and, um, they're probably gonna be so appreciative of the new software and the technology. Um, what, so do we have a hard, so when we look at What, so do we have a hard, so when we look at timeframe, what does that look like, Kevin? Are we looking at a hard, like, we're going to make this, we're going to get going and have a concrete date, or are we, are we looking at a specific date?
On the smartboards, the vendor's ready to go. I mean, he's ready to roll now. I mean, obviously, there's some equipment order piece, but they have to finalize, but they plan on starting soon as school gets out. And they said they'll have it done by the end of August completely. So that's the biggest project. The security systems, ready to roll, I mean, that stuff, as soon as we do it. So a lot of these are going to be summertime projects, you know what I mean? For most of these, the firewall issue, we have quotes, ready to roll. They are going to be starting that probably June first, and probably have it done by July. So that's their timeframe. So a lot of these, we've gone through all these processes, and we've contacted the vendors to get the schedule, because the ideal for us is to get it done as soon as possible so that when September comes, we're not dragging on with these projects.
Thank you, Kevin. And just in terms of just the enhanced security system, have we talked with Mr. Donovan about this? Are we collaborating with the city folks on just what that looks like? Maybe that's a question for the mayor, or Kevin?
We did. We, actually, I can, we had Steve Smith involved in this, he came in, and he was very supportive of it, because he said the same thing that we're referring to. Some of the older schools, the PA systems, you know, it's all old wiring, and it's, they're going to have to have vendors come in and try to trace down a problem and fix it. This is going to provide all new equipment and wiring in the building so to allow them to utilize this system. So he loved it, he saw it, I think, two weeks ago or a week or so ago, and was very supportive of it.
Awesome. And I have just one more, just a clarification question around funding. So could you explain, and I looked at some of the items that you put out there, could you just kind of go into a little bit of how this is being funded?
Again, as, you know, we've been in, like, we did this last year, when we've been in, like, a lot of the substitutes, like, you know, during the fall and even now, we really don't have substitutes, so the substitute lines, there's savings there. There are some other things that didn't happen this year, there are some open positions. We also, if you recall, we had a, some furloughs, that people accepted furloughs, there was some offset that I increased my unemployment line, but there's still savings there. So a lot of the savings just keep getting, and again, on some paraprofessional jobs that weren't filled or weren't available. So when you're going to go through all the little different lines, we do a projection, and we see that these are going to be savings across the district. And you can see there's a good amount of number there that we're looking at in total savings of three point seven million dollars on the salary lines, and that's how we're funding these.
Thank you so much, Kevin, I appreciate it.
Member Gately.
Kevin, I love the smartboard replacements. Is that like the ones at St. Mary's, is that the one you were referencing?
It's the same thing, but that product over at St. Mary's was cost more. And actually, it wasn't, we felt they, it was actually maybe not quite as superior as this one, that's the one I was referring to. And the software was going to be an extra cost. So that project, we went out and we did get quotes from them, it was going to cost more for that system, and it would have cost an additional, because they didn't want to put any software, they said that's a separate purchase. So, you know, it would have even probably cost another half million dollars more than when you put the software on it long-term. So we went with this, which is, we felt also that having teachers look at it and saying, this is what they use, so we're trying to make it as easy as possible for our staff to, you know, just not have to get completely saying, I never touched this before, at least we're kind of looking at it from that standpoint, should be an easier transition, that's all.
Yep, I like it, I think it's a good move. I love the teacher workstation idea, you know, so people can be standing as they're using that board. One question I have about the English security upgrade, and I want to just make sure that there are cameras in those portables.
That, that I would have to check on, I'd have to check with Orrin on that, but yeah, we would have to have something, we might have to add one or two out there, because right now, I'm sure there won't be anything there right now. So when we go forward, if that's a couple extra cameras out there, we can probably, as part of this project, throw those in as well.
Okay, and what was the other question? I like the classroom audio enhancement and paging system, I think that's going to help. So one other question is, all this work that's getting done, and the other work on the ear quality and ventilation, will that all occur at the same time?
I don't have the timeline on the HVAC, I think, I think they're ready to go on that. And just as an update, the mayor's aware that the, we applied for the funds from the ESAR grant, and that was approved to do that project. So I did talk to Tim Leonard, and I guess they're all set on their side, it's just a matter of starting that project whenever that, when the vendor's ready to do that project. So I believe, I'm not sure if he's ordered the equipment yet or where that stands, but I think they're ready to roll. Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if you can add anything to that.
Yes, they're ready to, it's all prepared, ready to get going. The funds were approved, so they're ready to get the work going. Probably going to anticipate it's going to be a bit longer than the beginning of the school year. We were talking about this in January, and being able to get the ESAR dollars and trying to get the waiver, took a couple of months here, so that, that work will, and I know Dr. Tutwiler has been very strongly supportive of the effort, but also very strongly voicing that the disruption has to be, you know, dramatically limited in terms of the classroom as that work continues. But the work will begin shortly. And again, I didn't talk related to the, you know, the other items that we're talking about here, but I'm anticipating, that seems to me that's more summer work that can be done, probably in conjunction and separate from what's going to go on in the ventilation system. So I don't know, anyone else has thought on that, but seems to me that's, that's the indication from what we're, the discussion here. And, you know, we're looking at probably five or six months for the, you know, the ventilation work to be completed.
Okay, and Kevin, one more thing. I'm in agreement with Michael and Brian on checking with teachers to see if they would like some professional development on this new equipment, the smartboard. I don't know how many teachers have used document cameras. Our system has been pretty far behind, so maybe they're not familiar with document cameras and how to use them, that could be added to a little professional in technology. But I think this is a good, a good start, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Nicholson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. McHugh, for the, for the presentation. I definitely agree that these are the right priorities for these kinds of savings, you know, they're one-time savings, and so these are one-time investments, and we've seen the importance, we know the importance of technology and seeing that all the more this year. And so I guess my, so thank you for that. I guess the question, you talked, you mentioned sort of the various sources of input you've got, which is great, ISD and Citi, and also, we do have a lot of these, a lot of the technology is going to be used in the, in the classroom, and so I'm sure this has been part of it. But can you talk a little bit about the, the sort of educator input, staff input, about sort of where their biggest technology needs and sort of issues are, and, you know, how we see this as being responsive to that?
I think the one thing that we're hearing about is people are coming back in, is the bandwidth is probably one of the top, even though it's not the most expensive, it's one of the top items that we're dealing with, because as we're streaming video and people are trying to do video, they have children at home, you know, working remotely and using those systems. So I think, if you ask me, what is the biggest concern, is that. I think these other items are just going to enhance their teaching ability, and that's what we're hearing. But I would say, and I will double-check on the, making sure that that bandwidth is enough, because that would be my number-one concern, because when you've got everybody on, as we know, we've all experienced that, the buffering, or, and I, you know, I know that the last meeting, you recall, I was gobbled at the meeting, and I found out I was at home that day, and my son was downloading and streaming videos. So at home, even though I have the fastest I can get at home through Comcast, it obviously wasn't fast enough, and you guys couldn't hear me when I had to speak. So it does happen, so I think that's always been my concern, and I think that's what we're hearing, because we do have a couple of hiccups right now, so we have to tell them, we have to kind of limit what they can do currently as far as the bandwidth we currently have. But unfortunately, if we get this approval, the vendor said they could start in June first and probably have it done by the middle of July, everything up to go. So it'll help us going forward into next year.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Kevin, I have a couple of questions, I don't see any other members that have questions. In terms of the smartboards, and you said you're buying eight hundred, right, new ones, does that mean some of the replacement ones are going to be, be able to handle what we're talking about here? And what happens to the, all of the smartboards we have that may still be, you know, fairly useful, but obviously, we're looking to upgrade for our schools? So what do we, will those be surplus? And I guess it relates to the question that Member Gately was talking, or some of the members were talking about in terms of training. If the new equipment that we've been replacing over the last year, is that the same equipment that we're buying eight hundred of? And, so I guess there's a couple of questions there.
Yeah, so just a very good question. So the old ones, and I think you heard me explain in February, I used the school committee room, and I think that as a, just a point of reference, you can actually write on those as well with special markers. So we're not going to take the old boards down completely, because those can still be used as a whiteboard, you know what I mean? So we want to have teachers to still have that ability. It's that, I call it the overhead projector type thing, that's sitting up on the ceiling looking down, they have videos, so that will come off. We will hold on to some of those, because we still have some that we replaced over the few years ago, so we don't want to dispose of them. And that's something we would have to reassess, we might be able to get and actually consider them as surplus equipment, and if that's the case, I would come back to you guys with that as an answer, and we could sell those off to another vendor, or if the committee wished, if they don't have a useful way, we could donate them to some other school district or something. And we definitely would keep a few as backup, because as you can see, I think I said we have nine hundred and twenty, and we're only buying eight hundred, so we're going to need some to save as down the road, so we can, because, you know, this is going to be, if you're price amount, it's roughly about, you know, almost thirty-three hundred dollars a unit, you know, to buy one. So it does add up fast, and we kind of fought that through that way, so I think that's it. And as far as I think the training, I think that's a great idea, I think we can ensure that we have some type of training for everybody that's been raised as the third concern there and deal with it that way. Does that answer all your questions, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yes, thank you. And I've got a couple more here. I agree with the teacher workstation, sounds to me they're more like the stand-up type desks that people are getting in their offices, that is going to allow the teachers to have all of the technology right at their fingertips instead of sitting down and trying to work on a laptop. Is that, it seems to me, I mean, I haven't seen them, but that's what we're talking about?
That's correct. So they'll be able to stand up and, you know, use it as like, in essence, it is a stand-up desk, and they'll be able to put their laptop on and connect right to the smartboard, the document camera will be able to connect to it, so we're trying to connect everything together, so if they're doing things, they're all go, that way they can either show it through the smartboard or, you know, or through the system that computes out the students. So that's what we're trying to do, kind of, it's kind of, I consider this just a major upgrade of all our existing classroom technology and bring it into the, bring it into the, be a leader in these districts, you know. I think that if this all happens, I think this is going to be like a showcase for other schools that won't even have this ability.
And I guess, similar to that, the teacher document cameras, so I was, while we're on Zoom, I've been working with the camera that's on top of the computer here, and, you know, it was, so it was guided in the right direction. Is that what we're talking about? So basically, cameras that will allow the teachers to direct the cameras towards whatever they're doing in the classroom on an exhibit or something? So are they easily used, or is it more complicated than that, Kevin?
I'll go there.
Dr. Tutwiler, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, just really quickly, document cameras are very, very simple, but very powerful tools that project, you know, essentially a document. They typically point downward, and if a teacher was, you know, analyzing a passage and showing how he or she would dissect the text, they would mark it up on a regular sheet of paper, but the document camera is capturing that and projecting it on the screen so the students can see what's happening. You can do it in math, you can do it in science, if you're doing a lab and a demonstration, it allows the students, instead of, you know, when I was growing up, we'd all crowd around it, you know, the test, the desk, this allows students to see projected very clearly what's going on as the teacher does a demonstration. So very simple tools, very powerful tools, and ones we think will make a big impact.
Great, thank you. Deputy Superintendent Rogero.
Well, I just wanted to add that, you know, Tim, myself, Pat, we were part of the demonstration, and when they demonstrated the new document cameras, now, we've had document cameras in a lot of our schools for a number of years. We call them Kennavisions. These are newer versions, much clearer, the picture is much more crisp, and they actually demonstrated how they could turn the camera to like the students who are in person, let's say, so that the students at home could actually see the kids. You know, not all day, obviously, but if they were doing something in particular, it could also be used in that way. So these are, and they just plug right into the computer, they're very, very, it's a very useful tool, and our teachers are very familiar with them.
Great, thank you. Kevin, I just have two more quick questions related to the financial piece. In terms of the three point seven million, is that the total amount of the savings, or is there more dollars available, or we won't know until the end of the year?
That's what I'm projecting right now, because if you recall, we just had some agreements that we did last week with that, would have been more, but with those agreements that we anticipate some additional costs for our staff, that's where, this is the number, whether it might fluctuate as we get closer to the end of the year, but right now, this is the number I'm projecting. I want to be, I'd rather give you a safe number than over-exaggerate and be short.
Right, thank you. And on the final question I have, in terms of the transfer on the other paging system and the audio enhancement, that, was that, so that's not coming from salary, that's coming from another area of the budget?
It's coming from the non-salary, and if you recall, originally, our plan was to do the HVAC system with some additional funds, and we, that was those funds that I was setting aside for that project, but since we're going with the ESAR fund, that has freed those funds up to be utilized for other expenditures.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Kevin. Any other questions from the members? So that requires a, both a motion and a vote to move that forward?
Michael has his hand up there.
I'm sorry, Member Sadoway, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna, I have the language for the motion, if I can make the motion.
Absolutely, thank you.
I make a motion to authorize the school business administrator to transfer three million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars from the unused salary accounts as follow. Three million, five hundred and sixty thousand to the network technology account, one hundred thousand to the finance furniture account, and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars to the school security account.
The motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Requires a roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Floyd?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
And the second motion is to authorize the school business administrator to transfer two million, five hundred and forty thousand from the non-salary maintenance account to the network technology account.
Is there a second? The second, a roll call required.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Um, next on the agenda is lease for new space at the YMCA. Dr. Tutwiler, would you like to speak to that?
Glad to. You'll remember that last year, we entered into a lease agreement with the YMCA, they have space on their second floor, specifically four classrooms that we used last year for pre-K classrooms. We have satisfied the space needs relative to our pre-K classrooms for the remainder of this year, but we would like to lease that space from them to have our pre-K testing team, to give them a space to perform all of those duties for the remainder of the year. We, they've sent us a draft lease that I've sent along to attorney Mahos. The lease would begin on Monday and end at the end of the school year, actually, June eighteenth, and they're seeking an agreement for three thousand dollars for that space for the nine weeks of use.
Any questions, Member Castellanos?
I just want to say, the YMCA, the folks over there, the Demarcus family, and the whole operation at the Y has been just remarkable. I live in Ward Six, and I've been able to witness the development through I live in Ward Six, and I've been, I've been able to witness um the development through the beginning stages. And I am a Y member, and the advocacy, just such a community resource the YMCA provides um in early childhood, and just so many outreach programs that they just, their reach is so far, and it's definitely uh a, a, a gem in the city. And it's, it's beautiful, the new Y. If you haven't scheduled your new tour, uh, I mean, they're doing tours, I recommend it. Um, they look, it looks wonderful. But yeah, I just wanted to give a quick little shout out.
Thank you, Member Castellanos. It's then, it's exciting to see what's happening in that whole area of the, the, the investment, the, the investment um on the uh the infrastructure as well, and the streets around the buildings and, and making it safer. So it really is a positive. I know, Dr. Tuttwiler, if you just wanna, I, because I know they've done a really good job on the space. So if you just want to describe a little bit, so everybody understands the space that we'll be using, because they, it really is some great space that they've taken advantage of and re-repurposed where those students will be going.
Uh, yeah, so I mean, if you're talking about the new Y, uh, that's not what it will be.
No, and I'm talking, I'm talking in the, in the old Y, but I, I have seen what they've done with the space, and they've really done a good job in terms of upgrading it, make it available. So uh I think it's just important to let people know that uh, you know, it's, it's a good partnership, that the space works for us. Um, and uh, and maybe, maybe I'm making the case myself, but uh they've done a really good job in taking that old space and I think repurposing for numerous uh, 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 space for young people and students. So uh I just wanted to, I think, highlight that. Not only are they investing in a beautiful new building, but they're really taking advantage of the space they've had in the past in the old building and upgrading and make it really uh, really valuable for us to take advantage of as well, so.
Mayor, I mean, you, you did a really nice job there. I mean, I would just add uh that Kathleen Walsh, the executive director, and Andrea Baez are, are close, close partners with the district. They had approximately two hundred of our students uh while we were in full remote mode uh with the learning pod. Great partners, we're, you know, uh, in, in close communication, uh, you know, supporting one another through the, through these times. Uh, and I think this, um, you know, th- this proposal for uh use of that space really reflects the depth of the partnership. Uh, so what I was uh hoping the committee would do was uh authorize me to sign the lease. Right now, attorney Myhos is in uh possession of the lease, and I don't know if he wants to say something about it, that this is, the language in there is his realm.
Okay. Attorney Myhos?
It's the same, this lease is, uh mirrors the lease that we executed last year, except it's for a shorter term, two months and a different consideration, that being the three thousand dollars. So then, I think that the problem motion would be authorize superintendent to execute the lease, and go forward with it, depending on the discretion of the school committee.
Okay. Thank you, member, uh attorney Myhos. Is there a motion? To uh?
Motion.
Go ahead, my member Sadoway.
Motion to, to um allow and give authorization to Dr. Tuttwiler to sign the lease with the YMCA for the remainder of the school year.
There's uh several seconds, uh requi, a roll call requi- required.
Member Casianos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next on the uh agen- agenda is updating in-person learning and transportation. And I'll just, um, I was with deputy superintendent Rogero and a number of, and the principal at Harrington and a number of, great to see several classrooms of students at the school today. Uh, Arbor Day planting uh two trees outside of the uh entrance, um, exciting addition to the school uh with uh uh the new trees, and they'll have a chance, those students will have a chance to see the tree grow and know that they were part of that planting today. But it was nice to, to be there, see the students and the teachers at the school. And uh, uh, the kids couldn't have been more excited uh today and, and being part of that ceremony. So I, I just wanted to lead in with that. But Dr. Tuttwiler, do you want to uh fill us in on how things are going?
Yeah, uh, they're, they're, they're going well, they're going really well. If you recall back to uh the late summer, summer months uh of the last school year, uh, or before the school year started, as we were preparing for this school year, uh, there was a consistent communication around the belief that no alternative approach supersedes in-person learning. Prioritizing the safety of students and staff, we completed the first half of the school year facilitating learning activities remotely. Since early February, we've been taking measurable and cautious steps toward expanding in-person learning, a fact about which we're proud and excited. Uh, by way of quick history, on February fourth, we invited our first cohort of special education students for in-person learning. The second cohort was invited on March eleventh. Last Thursday, April first, was the first day for in-person learning for kindergarten. Monday of this week marked the kickoff for in-person learning for grades one and two, in addition to kindergarten. It's also the first day of, uh, the first day of the first full week of in-person learning of the school year for these elementary grades and all self-contained classes. This coming Monday, grades three to five will begin five days of in-person learning, and we will begin the hybrid model for grades six through eight at the middle school level and nine and ten at the high school level. This week, my team, my team had occasion to visit a number of elementary schools to observe the welcome and launch. I can say with a high level of confidence that the plans and action reflect careful thinking, precision, and robust communication. It is early yet, but I observed noteworthy adherence to the mask requirement, particular attention to physical distancing, even among some of our youngest learners, and above all, joy. It has been a long time, but the joy and excitement among students and staff alike, as many of them meet in person for the first time this year, uh was abundantly clear. While the return to in-person learning can be, can and should be joyful uh for all, we're mindful that this can also be a stressful one. Uh, there are students who have had experiences over the course of the past year that may manifest in particular ways in this transition. Accordingly, we've developed a social-emotional learning document for staff to help them navigate the particulars of this transition as it relates to mental health. Further, social workers and our partners at Lynn Community Health are prepped and ready to provide supports where needed. We continue to refine and build on safety practices. One big one is full testing. The rollout continues. We're actively collecting consents from families and building on a protocol that will, that makes weekly testing doable. To be clear, this has been a major lift for our nursing team. We're actively making testing a more realistic protocol with the recent addition of nursing assistants, and we've also posted contact tracing positions as well. Staff in these roles will lessen some of the administrative burden on nurses. It is still a heavy lift nonetheless. As students return in larger numbers, we expect to collect the requisite paperwork and continue expanding. Shifting to instruction, we developed and disseminated a guide for simultaneous instruction. Further, we ordered and received the Bluetooth microphones to support the ability of at-home learners to hear their instructor. Again, this approach is new for most, and it will take some time to get in a rhythm. Nonetheless, we're taking steps forward to make the instructional experience fulfilling for at-home learners and in-person learners alike. Logistics are key. We've made every attempt to cover as many of the logistical elements of the transition back as possible. This includes, but is not limited to, ordering tents at schools where the enrollment or circumstances necessitate outdoor covering, outdoor or covered swing space, and tents are not easy to come by uh in this context, as you might imagine. Ordering uh reusable water bottles for all students to allow them to remain hydrated during the school day. Partnering closely with after-school care providers to attempt to create as seamless and supportive an experience as possible for our families in the YMCA uh is one of them. Developing coordinated travel pa- patterns within schools to ensure a safe and uh enjoyable experience for all. What I share here represents just a piece of the ongoing efforts. There's additional work happening in other realms. I say this to underscore that there's a lot going on, and I know that all members of the team feel that reality, and I continue to convey my deep appreciation for their efforts. The kids will benefit as a result. In our last meeting, I updated you briefly as to where we stand with transportation. The statewide shortage of bus drivers has hit our community particularly hard. There are eighteen bus drivers who can provide transportation needs for some six hundred and eighty students. The number of drivers is enough to provide transportation for approximately sixty percent of students who have it on their plan. Because we cannot provide transportation for all, we temporarily suspended it. Here, I want to underscore that in an effort to meet every student's transportation need, we, we have left no stone unturned. We have explored numerous alternatives, evaluated multiple options, all of which have not yielded a substantive, comprehensive, reliable, and safe means for transporting our students. We have devised a plan that your approval uh of the memoranda of agreement with teachers and administrators allows us to effectuate. We have the green light to proceed with that plan. Outreach to families is underway, and in partnership with the administrators of special education, we will host a virtual town hall for the impacted families on Tuesday evening. Bear in mind, as I mentioned in the last meeting, that root development is a major undertaking and typically takes about two months to develop. In close partnership with our transportation provider, we expect to launch our plan on or before May twelfth, meaning transportation would resume on that date. Finally, state regulation calls for middle school return, middle school to return to five days of in-person learning uh per week on April twenty-eighth. We submitted a waiver to begin our five-day in-person learning plan for middle school, seven days beyond the state deadline, that's May tenth. Uh, receipt of that document was acknowledged and approval was subsequently uh conveyed just yesterday. That is uh a brief update as to, to where we stand with the expansion. Uh, and I, I just want to underscore that, um, you know, in, in many ways, um, you know, th- this has been a good week. Uh, it's not been without challenges, there are definitely challenges, and we, uh, you know, our hearts are broken related to the transportation issue, as we know that there is a subset of uh families who cannot get their students to school. Um, and we are working uh every angle to make that happen as quickly as possible. Uh, but for the students who were in person today, uh, today and this week, uh, we can say, or all the reports seem to indicate that it's gone well. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Member Castellanos, member Nicholson, member Sadoway, then member Capola.
Dr. Tuttwiler, thank you so much for your, your presentation as always. It's very clear, and we see your commitment and your team's dedication to service in this district. Um, I just want to highlight some of the, the features that you mentioned about mental health and what we're doing to um support our students and our families. Um, you know, outreach is gonna be very important and crucial, um, as you may already know. Um, this has been a very heavy experience for a lot of families. Um, the amount of trauma that's out there right now is very evident, and it's going to keep growing. Um, and instead of being reactive, uh, I think, I think, I could tell, I could see by your team's efforts that we've, we're trying to be proactive. Um, and it's very much appreciative, and, and the, the social workers, and the counselors, everyone. Uh, I can really see everyone's got all hands on deck. Um, that being said, I think the capacity is, everyone's going really fast, and I think it is important too for your staff to practice, you know, this vicarious trauma and exposure for your staff. Um, as you said, like folks are really working, they've been working hard. Everyone's been all, all hands on deck, so, um, and there's, there's, there's a shift from kids that weren't being seen in person now are going to be in person, that new, um, new concerns will arise. Um, it's just important to be prepared. Um, so in terms of just that, that document that they created, are we gonna be, I, I guess, you know, Facebook, you guys are gonna be posting that on Facebook, correct? Is that, that, that document that you referred to?
Uh, that, that is uh a, an internal to- document for staff. Uh, it's not necessarily um family-facing. Uh, it, it's more around uh strategies, uh, you know, observing, you know, or understanding certain behaviors in classrooms. Not sure if, um, Kim, if you want to speak to it more. Uh, but it is, it is a, it is not a family or a community-facing document.
Right, and what they've also done is, is as staff return, we have an orientation day, and part of that orientation day is just a revisiting of those trauma-informed practices, which has already been a part of their PD, but just kind of highlighting all those practices along with the document.
Um, deputy power, I appreciate that. I also want to give a quick shout out to Tracy Scher, um, the, for, the, the, the Lynn Youth Subcommittee. Um, we've, that, you know, they, we've been able to have inter-agency collaboration throughout this process. Uh, Dr. Tuttwiler and just Kim, just so that you know, like, they, they, they provide great res- resources to the, the agencies involved. Um, it would be great to see if maybe we could gather some sort of, again, a, a centralized resource um packet to share on Facebook, because I know a lot of constituents, a lot of my parents and fa- and students that I, you know, I'm working with, they, they utilize Facebook. So maybe social media, just to kind of get that out there, because access is very important. Uh, we got all these resources sometimes that don't get utilized. Um, and, and I think going back to just the, 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 the height and increase for mental health um supports is very high right now, and uh we're beyond just awareness, we really need to be proactive. So I appreciate all the help.
Thank you. Uh, member Nicholson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler, for that update. Um, also thank you for uh all the incredible planning that would have gone into all of this, that did go on, into all this, from you, from all of your team, um, all the administrators and the educators. Uh, it, it's a, it's a monumental task to, to uh reopen in this context, with so much, that's a moving target, and so much that's different about the last time we were there, and, and with the stakes as high as they are, um, with the, the public health issues still being very much with us, and um, and uh the, the, the needs being so great for people to be together. Um, so, so thank you, everyone, for that. And, and I also just want to thank our families, um, for the role they've played in that, their patience throughout the year. Uh, very glad to hear that, Dr. Tuttwiler, uh, about the, the students being prepared to comply with the um, public safety measures, and, and I think we, we certainly can thank families for, for their role in that, because they, they play a big role in preparing students for, for being able to, um, to, to maintain that. And so, uh, thank you so much to our families, our students who are, who are doing this now, and the teachers and educators that made this possible. Um, so the, my first question was around, I, I think that's, I, I would agree with uh member Castellanos uh that the social-emotional learning is, is, is very important, um, and I'm glad that we're addressing that. I know also that we're taking seriously the, 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 the potential uh risk of, of academic gaps um and, and which might have unfolded over the last year. Uh, and that was something that we had uh begun assessing earlier this year with the I-ready assessments and, and everything. Um, is there uh an update on, on what we think we're, we're dealing with in terms of what, what, what the learning gaps look like from where we would have expected to be had we been uh not interrupted?
Yeah, I, I think I, I should probably, you know, prepare something formal to present to the school committee in terms of, um, you know, our, our, our assessment of, of that picture district-wide. Uh, you know, it's, it, it's, it's hard. I mean, it was a first go with that, with that assessment, um, you know, district-wide, you know, first, understanding how to administer, understanding, understanding what the data means, uh, and how to, you know, translate it into actionable, uh targeted uh practices in the classroom. Uh, that, that is probably something we should do in a, in a more formal uh presentation. Uh, but I'll tell you, you know, mu- much of our strategy right now is really around acclimating kids to, to being in person in school. Uh, you know, the commissioner, uh, you, you know, I, I would never speak ill of him publicly, but uh, you know, one thing that I agree with that he said uh recently is, you know, the profound benefit just for kids being in school, right? You know, never mind, of, of course, we, we, uh, our, our core uh mission here is around learning and growth. Um, but closely tied to that, um, and, and in many ways, what precedes that is the social-emotional well-being, the mental health of students, and being with peers, being with their teacher, being in a place that they love, uh, is going to have a profound impact. And so, you know, uh, when I was over at uh Cobbin on Monday morning, just watching uh the staff, the nurses, the, the paraprofessionals, the entire team. uh out on the that that blacktop on Franklin Street, greeting families, greeting kids, that joy. Uh those are the sorts of things that, you know, we're really focusing on transitioning kids, uh really getting them uh reconnected, re-acclimated with what school looks like and feels like. Um and uh believe in me, we are um, you you know, planning a very robust uh summer pro- program for kids uh and have also begun to turn uh our attention to um you know, a framework for for next year in terms of not remediation, but acceleration of learning. Uh and so um that that I'd like to do a more formal presentation on, but right now, we're really focused on getting kids back in and getting them acclimated.
Got it. Okay, no, that 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 sounds great. We'll look forward to that, but that'll make sense. Um on the transportation uh issues that we've been having, um I I, you know, th- thank you for your for your work and and your team's work and coming up with a plan on that. Um and thank you to the to our staff for their uh flexibility and and allowing the plan to come together. Um it's incredibly frustrating, and I know that that everyone shares the frustration. Um I think my question is, you know, uh one of the things that I think we'll do is look back on this and like a lot of the issues we've had this year and 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 try to see what we can, what we've learned, what we can do differently. Um and, you know, we won't face this exact scenario again, hopefully, but but, you know, in terms of uh when things go wrong, like thinking about takeaways. Um you know, well, obviously, there's there's I think an initial question of the 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 how sort of where um the valuing the skills that that are required and and recruiting the skills that are required. Um I I I guess there's, I also have sort of a more operational type question, because I think some of the 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 questions that that I'm seeing now, or or that even I I have now are, you know, the the gap from having a solution to begin with, implement the solution. Um and I know that there's some, the planning, like like you said, um but, you know, we're could you could you maybe speak a little bit more of that? Were we expecting, were we hoping that the drivers would would come and therefore, you know, why wasn't that plan done earlier, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, that that I I appreciate that question. Um you know, w- we can only operate on the information that we have. Right? Uh and uh our transportation uh provider has been a a partner for this with this district for a long time. Uh and when the information that we have is that, you know, there's a shortage, but uh it will be satisfied uh by whatever date, then that's that's we plan uh according to that. Uh and when it was made clear to us that like, wait a minute, it's it's actually not materializing in the way that we um you know, in the in the way that we first conveyed, you know, then then you have to go back to the drawing board and start thinking about, okay, well, let's first help you, um you know, find the drivers. Let's, you know, use our platforms to uh post your jobs and let's, you know, pound the concrete with you to try to find a solution around this. And when that's not materializing, uh you know, the the clock's still still ticking. All right, we need to go back to the drawing board and figure out if there's something that the district can do with the assumption that there's not gonna be an increase in drivers. Uh that takes time to devise a plan, uh one that is viable, right? So I might say, I I want to do um this schedule. That schedule then needs to be given to uh our transportation department uh and work in partnership with uh their rep- the representatives from the transportation company. And it actually needs to be sort of worked out and scrutinized. Can this actually work? That takes time. Uh but I, you know, I I I appreciate the question, because it offers the opportunity to really underscore that never, uh at no point during this year where uh was anybody on this team, you know, leaning back in their chair, sort of waiting uh for a solution to drop in our lap. Uh I mean, we've been at it uh since the since the late winter months when the the problem was brought to our attention. Uh and so, once we have the uh solution in place, um we now know that, you know, the actual rooting process takes takes a while and, you know, that that's where we are right now. Um you know, we're we're, the communication or outreach to families started yesterday. Um Felicia and I, the Administrator of Special Education, uh will hold a virtual town hall with impacted families on Tuesday evening uh and explain the uh the specifics of that plan and what they can expect. Uh and we'll also begin to devise a plan for uh how we can compensate for lost in-person or lost time uh for those students, uh because we owe it to them.
Great, yeah, that was that was my other question, and I I figured you would have um started thinking about that uh already, and that's so that's that's great to hear, and I think um families will appreciate hearing that, so thank you.
I I just wanna say one other thing, uh you you know, um you a- as superintendent, I take responsibility for every aspect of what happens here. Uh you know, I am I am responsible. Uh and so I wanna be clear that I'm not shifting the blame to, I mean, there is a statewide shortage, um but be that as it may, I'm still responsible. So uh I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not blaming anyone. Uh our our real focus has been solution-oriented.
Yeah, and and um I mean, I for one did not interpret your answer as 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 uh trying to do that. And and I think, you know, um the e- e- especially when the the issue is still raw, I think the the sometimes those those backward-looking um reflections can can be hard. Um but, you know, I think it's also part of sharing with with the people that are sort of uh bearing the 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 brunt of the of the impact um to be able to, you know, share with them what everyone's thinking and 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 how we are in the situation we're in. So for for what for what for what it's worth, I didn't I didn't take that to be what you were saying.
Thank you, member Sadoway.
Thank you. And Dr. Todd Waller, as a special education attorney, um you know, equity is important, especially for our special education students. So, you know, there there's key things that I was I was looking to hear, and and one of them is um what you had said, that there's a plan to make sure that um that that they're gonna get what they need to get in order to to stay um you know, within their IP or wha- whatever. Um they have a plan there, so I I appreciate that. Um earlier this year, I I I talked to you about um Anne Magna and the crossing guards, and if we were gonna give them enough notice to make sure that we didn't have a shortage of crossing guards. How did that go and wh- what are we doing now with regards to that?
Yeah, the 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 only place where it actually was a school that I was at uh on Monday morning where I did not see one uh was on O'Callahan, in front of Callahan. Uh I made one phone call and uh my understanding is that 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 crossing guard is reported there. I I'm not, you know, and Kim and Deb can keep me honest here, I'm not aware of uh schools that are are missing that uh important uh resource.
Okay, I I just wanted to make sure that there was that communication with her like she she requested. Um again, that's a that's an important role that that um we need full um in 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 the district. Um I was also at Cobbett, um but at the end of the school day. Um one of the things that I I noticed was um uh you know, obviously, every family has their comfort zone, so we have to keep that in mind. Um you know, some might not wanna stick around. Um but what I noticed was that there was a a an influx of a number of 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 kids in the um in the schoolyard. And my, you know, wh- when I noticed that, you know, my thought process was, well, if a parent is going to pick up their kid, they're gonna take all the kids, the ones that aren't in class yet or in school yet. So i- i- you know, obviously adds to the number of of people in that vicinity. So um do we have anything in 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 place or planned in place that we can continue to assure that um it's safe and um, you know, uh that uh that there's enough staff um available? Um because I did see the principal there, um um and, you know, he was interacting with someone and it was it was great to see that, um but there was a a a a large number of 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 people um in the schoolyard. And a- again, what I think is maybe there's uh some kids that are in the fifth grade or sixth grade and they're not in school yet, and they just came with the parent to pick up the the child that's that's uh that's going in person. So um that's just a thought that that I had. I just wanna make sure that um again, um w- w- where we have a plan and that uh people uh feel safe um when they're when they're picking up their kids.
Yeah, I mean, uh now, uh Deputy uh Superintendent Rogiro uh can chime in, uh Deputy Superintendent Powers as well. Uh I observed the welcome at Cobbett on Monday, and uh it was flawless. Uh there were there were families there. Now, mind you, it's just K one and two. Um but the plan, if you actually go on the site, you'll notice that there are dots uh painted on the ground.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, the kids know where to stand. Uh uh and so K one and two are right there in the front of the building, and then around the side, that's where they're planning to have the other students. I think it's a really thoughtful plan. I I don't know what you saw at dismissal. Uh we can certainly look into that, but uh Deb or Kim?
Uh I just, I I I'll let Kim speak, but I just wanna note that I know that uh all of our principals at every level have been communicating to families to, you know, want adult to come, um you know, be cognizant of the distancing. But I think we all have to acknowledge that as a, like myself as a mom, if you have other children,
Uh, yeah.
Hard if you don't have someone to watch them. So I I think they're doing the best they can. But Kim probably knows more about how the elementary principals have.
No, I was just gonna reiterate what exactly what Deputy Superintendent Rogiro said, that clear protocols have been put out. Um there has been that big ask, like um Deb noted, to only for only one adult family member to enter the schoolyard, to limit who who you bring into the schoolyard, and also to disperse immediately, to not to not gather a- and stay within the schoolyard. All of that communication has gone out to every single family.
And and my my question wasn't more, uh I guess, um put uh towards the fact that uh uh a a parent shouldn't bring all their kids. My my concern was more so of making sure that we have adequate staff available to make sure that um uh that uh that that it's a it's a safe environment for whoever's on the school property. So um I I don't know um how many teachers we normally have out there, but if there's if we're noticing that there's a larger number of people there, um I I don't think that it's a bad thing to make sure that um we have an extra teacher or two available uh to be out there, even if it costs us a little bit more money.
At the secondary level, we are definitely doing that. There, every secondary school has um been told they can put in a part-time worksheet for uh additional staff to be out in the, you know, schoolyard or out front of the school to make sure that students are staying, you know, not conjugating together and are staying distanced and are, that everyone is staying safe and and where they need to be. Um so we definitely are doing that. And I will communicate the same, uh that's already been communicated in most protocols at most elementary schools is that every teacher exits with their class.
Okay, and um what are we doing um to accommodate students and teachers during this uh transitioning time? Um a- aside from um, you know, the social emotional aspect of it, Dr. Todd Waller, you know, with the nurses, you just said that you're bringing in assistants um and and other um staff to help with the administrative aspect arm of of it. My wife's a school nurse. Uh a lot of it is 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 data entry administrative uh uh work to make sure that, you know, kids are up to date on their shots and all that stuff. So that's a a good thing to hear that you guys are doing that for for them. Um but uh obviously, our teachers and our students might need additional support during these transitional times. You know, are are we looking at bringing on some additional substitutes that could be available in the building for teachers? Um or um uh uh maybe additional paras? Because uh you know, there might be a a a a time where a student's overwhelmed and they're in in class, and it'd be great to have an adult sit with them to make sure uh that it's not a distraction uh to the uh to the class, but also that that kid's getting uh the the needed care that they need to to get back into the classroom. So that's that's my um my thought. Obviously, again, I like what you're doing with the nurses, but the educators also um are gonna need help with the the transitioning part. Especially when they have people online that they have to uh entertain and educate as well as the ones in 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 the class. So I I know we had a a shortage of substitutes. I know that we've had issues uh recruiting additional paras, but um we need we need to do something.
Yeah, I mean, uh you you said it right there at the end. I mean, there's there's uh just not the abundance of um human resources uh to bring to bear. And that is not unique to Lynn. I mean, that is uh, you know, when I'm on Urban Superintendent Network uh meetings or in the North Shore Roundtable meetings, that that has been a challenge for, you know, most or all districts uh from day one. Um what I would say is o- one thing that we did do right in the beginning of the school year is ensure that there is a social worker, at least one at every site. Um you know, to, you you know, intervene in those scenarios that you described when a student has a a meltdown, to make sure that those supports are are readily available. However, uh would I say that we are, um you know, could we use additional uh resources in that realm? Absolutely. Um but but that is a step that we made, uh a move that we made right at the beginning of the school year to make sure that uh at least there was some support there for those kinds of situations.
And it's and it's to help, uh again, the educators. I know this the the it it's a lot, you know, they might need a break where they 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 just need to to step out of the classroom. I- it's new to everybody. Um and and, you know, we don't have the technology that um, you know, Mr. McHugh talked about already. So you know what I mean? So i- i- if 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 we started off next year, the school year uh fresh, you know, things could have been a little bit different, but you know, we still, w- w- we have a little lag time here that we we can't have these missed opportunities. Um and a- again, if if we can look um uh uh to possibly uh getting some paras or or some subs. I know, uh it's it's hard, but I I at least would like to see some effort there if that's possible. Thank you.
Uh thank you. Member Capola?
Uh it's exciting to hear the kids have gone back to school. I'm I'm happy for them, their families, and for the staff. The um question I have is, what percentage of kids have returned and what percentage is obviously gonna be remote?
Yeah, so um the the survey is one thing, and then the actual uh reporting uh scenario is another. And so, so far for K one and two, uh it runs the 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 gamut. I mean, there are different percentages at different schools, but uh as of yesterday, uh that uh differential was uh sixty forty. Uh about sixty-three, sixty-four percent of kindergarten, first, second, uh are reporting in person. Uh and the remainder have chosen uh remote. Uh our, um you know, in speaking with principals, uh there are higher return rates in uh grades three, four, and five. And so um we expect, you know, across elementary schools to be um, uh you know, pretty much actually where the survey uh had us, uh maybe in the mid-seventies uh or as much as eighty percent uh returning in person, uh and the remainder uh learning remote. Uh at the secondary level, uh it's actually a little bit lower. Uh maybe the low to mid-sixties um at the uh at the middle school level, and then around sixty percent at the high school level. Uh that number may have changed since the last survey. Um you know, w- we will see when they actually return, but uh those are the numbers we're sort of working off of right now.
And um the special ed kids that were to have the bus transportation, what percentage of them have been brought in?
So there there there's actually good news to report uh there, uh Miss Capola. Uh so more kids who are in self-contained classrooms are reporting in person now than uh when we were providing in uh transportation. It's about seventy percent. You remember uh back, you know, in early February and again in March, uh you know, we were running about fifty percent of the the families choosing in person. Uh we think that uh it was really the burden around the A and P M model. Uh but once it goes to a full five-day model, um families opted for it, and about seventy percent of those families are 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 re- bringing their kids to school.
Okay, um I know we have eight, there's eighteen drivers, and that would have been sixty percent of the kids, but um I get a lot of questions of why, why do we suspend what we had?
Yeah, because it's an equity issue. Uh you know, what do I say to the forty percent uh who have every right to be on a on a bus and have access to transportation as well? Uh if you can't provide it uh across all of the students who have a you know, a legal right to it for their education plan, um then it 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 makes more sense to suspend it. Uh there is still transportation for students in our outer district programs, as well as those uh in the teams program. Uh but but it, beyond that, there there is none for the time being.
Okay, and if seventy percent Okay, and if seventy percent were coming in and sixty percent could be driven in by these eighteen drivers, I mean, doesn't that kinda say we just have thirty percent we need to get in here?
Well, still an equity issue. So then, what, the, the, the seventy percent that are driving their kids in, uh, may also want, uh, transportation, and so they've made the decision to drive their students, but I can't say now you have to continue to do that because you've chosen to do that thus far, and the ones who cannot or have chosen not to thus far, um, they're gonna get transportation. It's unfair. Uh, and so, are, 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 you know, these, that, this is, uh, sort of what I was talking about when I meant every stone turned. These are the sort of conversations that we've been having about, you know, maybe we can do this, and maybe we can do that, but it all goes back to the equity issue. If we're not able to provide, um, to, to all, uh, then we, we, you know, we, we had to stop, we had to create a plan, and, and, uh, our plan is to launch, uh, that, uh, transportation and staggered schedule, uh, beginning May twelfth, if not sooner.
Well, um, I'm just wondering, you said that they were all, you know, you've looked at other alternative plans. What might they have been?
Uh, you know.
You know, give people an idea of understanding that, you know?
Yeah, sure. Um, other, uh, transportation companies, I mean, you should know that, uh, North Reading, uh, Transportation, which is our purveyor, uh, and First Student, uh, really have a monopoly on the transportation in the state. Uh, they're responsible for about seventy percent of the transportation load statewide. Uh, there are other companies, but they're, but many are small, uh, or cannot, um, y- you know, accommodate our needs. And then that driver, uh, shortage is not just unique to North Reading or First Student. I don't know if you read, uh, in the Globe about Springfield, you know, s- some challenges there. Um, it's also in, in the smaller companies. And so, um, you know, as we looked at other companies, we were running into the same issue. Either it's a no, we don't have the capacity to accommodate your need, or we're struggling with drivers ourselves. Uh, and we've looked at, uh, I mean, the, we, the Rideshare or your, your private Uber or, or Lyft, um, uh, options, I mean, the logistics around that, uh, are, 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 you know, just make it a, a insurmountable, uh, uh, challenge. Um, uh, and also, those drivers don't meet the same, um, background check requirements, training requirements that a school bus driver does. Uh, and it would likely require parents to have to ride with their children, you know, to and fro, and that's an additional burden. Uh, we looked at that plan, it, it, it just wasn't, it just wasn't viable.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I, I know there were districts around us to have, you know, they are their own transporter, you know, they have their own bus. Was there anything that we looked into that, that any of those communities, you know, if they were not using, you know, um, a certain number of their kids weren't coming in and there were transportation pieces that could be used?
Um, you know, I'm not opposed to a patchwork approach, right? A little bit from this community, a little bit from that community. Uh, but, but that, even with the patchwork approach, i- it's not enough, uh, to accommodate, and, and and our outreach, you know, really wasn't yielding, you know, lots of flexibility in other communities, uh, to, to, uh, to support us with this. Uh, and so, you know, um, you know, and then we've had the conversation about increasing, uh, the reimbursement, which uh, has a lot of merit, uh, but for us, we go back to the equity issue. I mean, we've got a number of uh, families who have children with, uh, transportation on their, uh, I E P who are undocumented. In order to, uh, be reimbursed, you have to fill out a W nine, so that wouldn't be a viable option for, for those families, and so, you know, or, or it wouldn't be a, um, a benefit that they would be able to see. We do have about twenty-five families who are taking advantage of the standard, uh, you know, I R S rate, uh, for mileage reimbursement, um, but I, I don't wanna take, you know, an existing ec- equity issue and exacerbate it by, uh, you know, coming up with a solution that creates a lack of access for other families.
Yeah, and, and I understand, you know, the bus situation and the drivers and, um, you know, the state itself caused a little problem with that a number of years back by not letting, um, some of the driver ed teachers, you know, do the, you know, help people get their license. You know, they change it so there's a one spot in Avon, Mass, that people have to drive out to each day, come back, so many weeks to get it, and, um, you know, that, that's a problem. I don't know if we're ever gonna really fi- you know, it's, it, it might always be a problem, and it's something that if it's continued to be a problem for us, I mean, this is part of privatization. You know, maybe we need to look at some point of having some of our own transportation um, in-house so that we are not, you know, um, kinda held hostage. You know, 'cause at this rate, I'm, I'm not pleased with, you know, you're talking about some time in May for these people to get transportation, and that, that's just so much, uh, lost time and, um, and a burden. I mean, fifty-seven cents to drive your kid, you know, honestly, when you think about that, if a person had to be, you know, someplace, um, you know, maybe in the other end of the common, and the child went to Harrington, and so what, they get three dollars to do it, you gotta find a place to park near these schools, which is almost impossible to find, and if you have other kids, everybody's gotta come out of the cars to bring those kids in. I mean, it's, it's o- obviously, I can understand how a parent would say, it's not worth three dollars to me, and we're paying a lot to North Reading Transportation and other ones. Um, you know, it's in the millions that we pay. We s- we see it on our warrants every month, how much goes out, and just to have left us like this is really disappointing, because we have been a customer of theirs for many, many years, and, and, um, I'm, I'm disappointed in, you know, what has happened. I, I'm, I don't, I don't blame you for that in particular, because, um, it's really the transportation company that, um, has let us down, but I think that we need to think long-term of what is the best for us. I mean, you can, you can get anybody who has a license to drive a van, but you can't get anybody to drive a bus. And, um, you know, that is something that I think we really have to think about.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you, that's it.
Other questions from the members? Uh, just, just a comment, um, you know, it's, in the challenges that we talk about at every meeting, over a year, the challenges that all of us have faced and the s- school administration, Dr. Tuttwiler, you have faced, um, um, obviously it's been unprecedented and really, uh, so many different pieces of the puzzle that have to fit together, and, and I just can't say enough, uh, uh, with the challenges and the, uh, the, uh, the trying to get the right outcomes here, that there hasn't been harder work or more, more, uh, together, a collaboration to try and ensure that the students in this community, uh, get the, uh, the school education that we all know they deserve, and I, I just wanna put that out there, uh, because there's a challenge, a different challenge week to week, and I've said this on members meetings in the past, this evolves, this has been evolving and continues to evolve, so, uh, I just wanna, you know, put out there that the hard work, uh, and the, and with the, with the changing landscape and challenges that we don't anticipate today that appear on, in four weeks, that it's, um, it's a lot, and, and, uh, and a lot of hard work has gone into getting the students back that's beginning this week, and I just wanna give credit to everyone that's been a part of this, and, uh, uh, it has not been easy for, uh, anyone that's on the committee, and it's not been easy for, uh, anyone in the administration, but I have to say that the, the work that's gone into, uh, dealing with one of the top three or four communities impacted by this pandemic over the last year is pretty amazing when you look at everything that, uh, has happened, the challenges we faced, and the work that continues every day. So I just wanna say that, um, just been really impressed by people's ability to come together, uh, in very stressful times to continue to focus on what's important, and that's students. So, um, I wanna kudos to everyone that's continuing to try and, and get the, the, uh, the resources and the, uh, students what they need and what they deserve. So, uh, with that, I'd like to, uh, I think the final piece of the agenda is communications and information, and that's enrollment, uh, Dr. Tuttwiler.
Enrollment in the buildings.
Oh, oh, and I did miss that. Sorry, thank you. Uh, uh, so last, um, item on the new business is ratification votes taken in the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee. Member Ford, would you like to speak to that?
Head on mute first. Um, yeah, there was one vote taken in the Building and Grounds Subcommittee, and that was to, uh, approve the parking for both Ministerio International and Visitation Church, uh, granting them the use of the Harrington parking lot on Sunday mornings and some Saturdays, uh, with the provision, and that, that agreement can be rescinded if they interfere with the park interferes with school.
Member Sadoway?
Just a quick question. Um, I, I, uh, Attorney Nicholson, are they aware that they, that, that, that we're seeking approval for, for both establishments? Or, 'cause I, I, I'm afraid that the capacity might not be enough for both, or who's to say? Attorney Tuttwiler, is you?
Yeah, I, I, I actually asked that same question of, uh, Deputy Superintendent Rogiro, uh, a little bit earlier today as the former principal of that school. I think she can help you with that.
Yeah, the Harrington has, uh, a very large back lot that goes right around to the side of the building, so there's plenty of space there, as well as the front lot is accessible. So, I, I think that we need the two lots.
Uh, and, and if another establishment wants to also use Harrington, and a- a- are we?
I don't know that you could do more than the two.
Okay, and, um, what, what are we gonna do with snow emergencies? Um, what are we gonna do? Um, uh, you know, things come up, so I just wanna make sure that, um, uh, we, we keep that in mind. I know that we're just doing a vote to say okay. I just, I just wanna make sure that the expectations, um, and this is, is, is not a surprise to these, uh, to these establishments, these churches, because obviously they wanna, you know, meet and, and congregate, um, but I just wanna make sure that, um, that there's no issues with, uh, that, with them being able to, uh, use and play and, and do stuff on the property aside from parking. We should just be, be able to make sure that this is all articulated to the establishments.
Dr. Tuttwiler?
Yeah, just really quick. Um, so the, the, we're, we're gonna require them to complete the building use form, so we'll know specifically which days, uh, and it also allows us, you know, a, a communication mechanism to say, not this day, because there's a, you know, a school thing going on, or, 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 or what have you. Uh, when it gets to inclement weather, I mean, I, you know, I have to take a different approach there, but we've set up, uh, a, a mechanism for communication with them.
Awesome. I, that's the key, uh, point here, I think, that we need to be able to communicate and to let them, um, know these things, so it's not a surprise, you know, I would hate to show up to church on Sunday and, and not have a place to, to park, uh, because, uh, you know, uh, things weren't communicated. Um, but it, uh, th- those are the things that just popped into my mind, and I know that we addressed the liability issue. I don't want anyone getting hurt on the property and and that being an issue for, for the, the city. Um, but, um, again, um, the, the, these, these spaces aren't, aren't used, but, um, you know, during these times, but I just wanna make sure that we're, we're, we're all on the same page.
Member Nicholson?
Yeah, I, I, uh, thank you, Attorney Sadoway. I mean, I, I think that these churches, um, are, are, uh, had, had sought out the district to make sure that they were going through the proper channels, um, and are absolutely interested and willing to, to do, uh, enter into this, uh, cooperatively and collaboratively, and I'm sure will defer to any, any needs and requests that the the district has with regard to the, the property and the use of the property and, 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 um, you know, they're, they're not using the spaces now, and so I think, um, that, that when, when certain scenarios arise, they'll have the ability to, um, make those, make those changes, and, and as Dr. Tuttwiler said, that we'll, we'll, we'll be in communication with the district.
And I think the ultimate, the ultimate, um, effort or not part is to be good neighbors, and I think that's what we're trying to do.
Definitely. I don't know if we add it to the agreement, or is part of that, that the, uh, uh, there's certain requirements and, um, based on a number of issues, you know, snow, snow, for example, our, our uses of the school would be subject to the, uh, you know, and, and we also are saying, subject to, uh, we could at any time, uh, rescind this, uh, but I think, uh, maybe we just include, uh, you know, just a piece of language that, working directly with the, uh, with the administration, that certain requirements will have to be met to, uh, to comply with the use of the, uh, the space. And I just, just a point to, uh, the parking in the, in the, the lot, I think, they're already parking in the neighborhood, so it actually probably is gonna help alleviate some of the Sunday morning, uh, uh, you know, spaces that are not available to people in the neighborhood, that, as, as well as those that are going to the church. So I think it is a probably a positive, uh, as well for the neighborhood, to have that, that location available for, for a certain period of time on Sundays for, for services, but, uh, uh, I would suggest maybe, you know, one, it's, uh, the, the language should include that it can be rescinded at any time, and that, uh, subject to, uh, working closely with the administration to, to recognize any further requirements or, um, for when they could or couldn't be there, uh, so that that would be a part of the discussions with the, uh, with the two churches.
Well, language was in there that it could be rescinded any time if it interfered with, uh, school operation, so.
So, any other discussion?
Do we second it, or? We have to have a vote on it, right?
I wanna clarify the motion, then we can second it, and we'll have to have a vote on it, yes.
Okay, the, uh, we granted permission to the two churches to park within the parking lot on Sundays and some Saturdays with the clause that we can rescind the policy, the agreement at any time if it violates or interferes with school operations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Requires a roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Motion captured.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Ford. Uh, Dr. Tuttwiler?
Good to go, man. That's just, uh, data that's provided in the packet.
Great.
Can I just, uh, say something, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Sadoway.
Uh, I, I'm not sure if anyone else noticed the retirement, um, in the packet, but we, I don't think we can go without, without saying something nice about, uh, Sergeant Major.
I, I couldn't agree more, so I don't know if you would like to say a few words, or any other members? Um, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, to speak, uh, initially, but, uh, uh, knowing Sergeant Major for probably the whole time that he's been working at Lynn English and, and several roles that I've had, and to see the, uh, uh, not only see the, the amazing work that's been done and the quality of the work that comes from that program, and, and also to see, uh, the, uh, Junior ROTC, not only in Lynn, but in so many different places uh, in the region, uh, coming and being part of events, always, always available, always shining, uh, a shining light of what our community is all about, uh, and then going, uh, and winning national awards for the work they do, the hard work they do together. It's been such an amazing um, part of what hap- what is, uh, Lynn English is all about, and I always say to Sergeant Major that, uh, you know, he's a double bulldog. Lynn English and the Marines, uh, both bulldogs, uh, is their, you know, uh, their characteristics, is the bulldog is, is their mascot, uh, but not only the, the, the amazing work and the students and how great a job they've done, but he is such a wonderful person and a great leader, and, and he's, you know, it's reflected in what the students have learned from him and what he's contributed to the community. So, uh, he is leaving, uh, he leaves an amazing legacy of great work, and uh, all of the students that have a chance to know him and go through that program carry on that legacy as well. So I wish him the best, uh, health and happiness and whatever he has in the future, but, um, it's been an honor to know him and to see the work he's done, and always with a smile on his face, uh, good person, and, uh, he will be missed. Member Gately? Oh, uh, and then I'll go to Member Sadoway.
I was just wondering if, I just noticed it, thank you, Mr. Sa- Attorney Sadoway for bringing that to my attention, if we could give him a special citation at a school committee me- meeting in June before he leaves. That would be a nice, 'cause he is just such a great member of our community.
That's a great idea, and it'll, it'll work. I think it's a great idea, Member Gately, and it'll, it'll work. Mary, if you could, um, make sure that we put that uh, together and, and, and get it on our agenda. Member Sadoway, then Member, uh, Castellanos.
And, and, and just like you said, uh, Mayor, you know, for as long as I remember, um, he's, he's been a staple in the, in, in the community, in, in, in this community. And, and one of the things that- And and one of the things that I I think goes without saying, and 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 we see it time and time again, is i- i- is the people in his program, they show up, they have amazing citizenship and community service that they provide without any questions. You you go to an event, they're they're volunteering with a smile on their face, and they're doing so um uh without any issues, without any hesitation. And it's it's such a a great thing to see that program. Um, and and that's why they succeed so much in in what they do throughout the country. And uh they do it with joy. So I I I talked to Dr. Tutwiler about it uh when I saw it. And um, you know, I was I was freaking out, like, what what are we gonna do? Like, uh, this is these are big shoes to fill. And and Dr. Tutwiler said it beautifully, where he said, he laid down a foundation that's gonna last for for generations. And and that's that's the truth. It's it's so true. And um I I can only imagine that when he when he retires, his former students are gonna come back to make sure that that program is in tip-top shape as well. So i- it's it's gonna be uh great to see the future, but it's also uh our responsibility, the honor of the past, and and the work that he's uh he's done for the community. So I wanted to bring that community aspect to it as well. So thank you, Sergeant Major.
Member Castellanos?
Just a quick brief, I know everyone, you know, Michael and and Mayor McGee and Malina, I think everyone knows, you know, Sergeant Major put that program on the map nationally. Uh, it was always a pleasure to have him come in front of us and and to to meet with his students and just the generational impact that he had and has is going to leave that foundation that Dr. Tutwiler, we all see. Um, he's got a lot of kids off the street. I know growing up, you know, being at Lynn English High School, I remember um, he he's been a champion of service. Um, and he's, you know, he's been someone in the community that always puts his best foot forward. He doesn't cut corners, and it's been remarkable to witness as a public servant. He is a true inspiration. I'm grateful that I had time on the committee to work with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Ford?
Yeah, just to quickly echo what uh what Michael was saying, uh what what he brought to Lynn English as far as trophies, recognition, championships, that it comes in second to the product that he produced. He he turned out a product every year that was far above the excellence of any any trophy that he earned. He produced young men and women that are gonna make this city proud for a lot of years. It's it's gonna be like trying to replace Belichick.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Ford. Um, thank you all. Uh, any uh, anything else from the committee? Um, happy to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call required.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, and good night, everyone.
Good night.
Talk to you soon.
Good night.
Good night.